Just wanted to kind of throw it out to our council. Thoughts, comments that you have for us reading this, things that perhaps can help me and maybe other counselors in looking at this, like, you know, how should we be?
I'm still getting on my speed myself, but I get, you know, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this agreement. I think part of it is to get a sense of the additional steps and what your role will be when those things take place. For example, the 6A contract is referenced in here, but it's not, it won't be executed until sometime in the future. So that's going to be a key agreement.
The 6A contract is what you clarify?
That's, in fact, the 121A agreement.
It's all about that.
Yeah, so basically, the business deal, the appraisal, you're going to sell for fair market value. You can see that in the appraisal comments. But the, in lieu of taxes, they're going to get this 6A contract, which is basically a payment of 10% of gross. So basically, you're looking at that revenue compared to that more taxes, and that's where the deal is to be made. That's how, I think, from following this, right, whether it was the conversion of heaven or earth, I think, basically, the, I mean, you don't get something for nothing, right? So if the highest and best use is to stick over quota, and they're going to tell us, see, and find, if things are going, they're getting a little lease someplace.
Right.
And apparently, it's not in the purchase price, because the appraised value is the appraised value. So it's in the 6A contract. Am I wrong?
Yes.
So that's, I think, that's just how I'm looking at it as a voter vote. So that's important.
The 6A contract is essentially never not paying taxes, but the money that the city gets.
Right.
Yes.
Right. So that's one element of it. Then there's the garage. And I haven't quite figured out yet, I'm trying to, I'm sure they'll help me in the beginning, with the risks associated with the garage, like the cost of runs. Again, I'm sure that will uncover, but the point being that GMP contract is a key, key part. So you've got a 6A contract, you still have a form of it, one X, you've got a parting lease, you've got a, which you have the concept, and you don't have, it's not, it's another key document that will be negotiated and executed. And related to that is the GMP contract, construction of the garage. And, you know, the lease, parting lease, and the cost of that construction are closely related. And so I think, you know, I think I see the council as a fiscal body. So those are the things I think you're going to be looking at. Ultimately, then finally, I don't know what else to talk about, but again, I'm just catching up here. I wasn't really...
You were on for next week. I did make that note.
I wasn't expecting...
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't here. I came in, oh, yeah, so I...
I wasn't expecting to be here. I just have a school code.
We will have you before us, too.
Okay, so I've got a lot of work...
You're on next week's line.
But I think ultimately, it's a matter of, on the downside, and we've looked at this with Streetworks, and we have to do that, is that if this is that something went wrong a lot, how would we, how would we, if that was a little more...
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I didn't realize, sorry. Figure if we're paying, you guys will use it. This is our product, paying, our dad's asleep in the back. He's not here. But just lastly, you wouldn't advise us, even being in a position of votism, to we get all that financial stuff, have an opportunity to go through that, right? I mean, this isn't, we can't just vote on this, the legal document alone, right?
I appreciate that.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Yeah. I only say we can do whatever we want when it's my own interest. This is what I want to do, what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cheung.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So, Bill, I guess I'll call you up, because a lot of questions I have are more logistical, because, you know, guys, as Councilwoman Cheung said, we can't actually ask any details of the financing, because we don't have numbers, it's not the best to look for. You know, we have forecasted numbers, but from what I'm understanding, there are not any actual numbers that we can deliver, because a lot of my questions are just procedural stuff, that just go through that with you. So the first is on this presentation that you have here?
Yes.
On the second page, you talk about codes utility and site work. Is that one to be paid by?
I'm sorry, I, second page of...
Yeah, on the presentation, you have codes utility and site work?
Yes, the, the, I'm sorry, I...
Utility, utility and site work?
Utility site work?
Yes.
That's, that's city responsible.
So working problems with areas, and in detail, and...
Yes.
But the...
Those are, those are public improvements.
But the public part will be paid by us? That public improvement will be paid by developer?
The public part will be paid by the city, yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought, I, the public part must be paid by...
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about the part that's adjacent to this project will be built by the developer and maintained by the developer, and a portion of it will be paid for by the city. The infrastructure will be paid for by the city. Underpinning that part, or under the part, is a portion of the garage.
Spirit, there's a lot of documents, I guess, major, just, right. Okay, and who's waiting, or question for panel, is it? This is the first time I've met you, and half of my issued questions here have to do with how we came up with these numbers and these formulas, and you helped clarify that very well, so I appreciate that. One of the things we talked about here was the 10% of the project revenue. We talked all revenue for this space. This is a dual question. So the agreement here says that there's going to be about 7,000 per square feet of commercial retail space, and then, I forgot, because you had mentioned it, it's going to be 4,000 square feet, so which, which is it? Because that's the difference of 3,000 square feet and rent that we're talking about.
The design plan shows 4,000.
So it's 4,000 for retail and commercial space? Okay, is that included in that overall revenue that we're going to receive? So it's not just the rent, it's not just the laundry, it's going to go also with the commercial rent that's going to be included as well?
All, I've been listening from all sources, that's right.
Bill, you had talked about the process for which the 121A needs to be approved right now. Do we have a rough estimate as far as timeline goes? Are we talking two months, are they talking in Consey? Is it just a rough timeline? And I'm not going to hold you to it, but just to have an idea of what we're...
The 121A process, the, at the state level, it's been running a year, and that is why it's one, that is one reason why, in the whole repetition that we brought before the council, we were seeking to reinstate the city's authority to operate its own 121A program. We believe we could do it more efficiently than taking a year to approve a 121A agreement. We would look to the city of Boston, there's only two, only two other communities that do control the loan, one in Springfield, and the other is Boston. The city of Boston has promulgated its own rules and regulations through what used to be referred to as the VRA. And so we would look to mirror image that. We have an expert in that area, who is actually looking at those regulations at the present time.
So we're talking something less than a year...
We would, we would look to do it expeditionally within a matter of...
And as you recall, this is not a lease agreement, it's a seller agreement. There's point number four on there, the excise tax payments. The last sentence in that says, "For purposes of capitalizing the excise tax penalty, the term gross income shall mean only the revenues received by the owner and shall not include the income received by the developer." Aren't they all the same in this instance?
I don't agree with ironies, they're not. The national law of 121A requires that the developer create a separate entity that becomes the operator of the facility and through which all of the funds are taxable, through the agreement. Probably should use the word taxable, but whatever the minimum payment is, that's the entity that's responsible for payment.
So it's a corporate excise tax, as opposed to a property operations-based tax?
I have a slide here, I'll go through already the answer. One thing I did want to commend you guys on is, I think it's one of my biggest concerns is, again, I was a part of this process, trying to structure it, but it's very much in the brains, in my brain, what happened. And, you know, to whoever put this agreement together, there, there was language in there about ledgers of coordination, and we're talking with multiple mortgages and things that we're going to be working with, and, you know, we supersede that. And I know it's not a legitimate, so I just wanted to commend you guys for putting that together and ensuring the city got the good, you know, something along that happens here. The last question I have for you is, you guys had mentioned that any changes that would be happening to this deal, if it is approved, will have to go through us. But in that same document that was referred to, the excise tax being, point number 18, does say minor changes, and it says in order to accommodate lenders and clear parties, the mayor on behalf of the city may make such reasonable changes to this agreement, and that's considered a minor change. So, I mean, minor change is a interpretation. Again, to all of us up here, I've heard a different interpretation of what minor is. So when you say that any changes made to this had to be approved by us, why is there then another stipulation in there saying minor changes don't have to? Can somebody just clarify that, and why that's a minor?
I think you're in the 6A contract, I think, is that section 8D you're referring to?
So...
On the front page, it says 6A. The, there's a, whenever you do real estate development of a commercial nature, lenders play a very important role. And they always have invariably different points of view about how issues or language in a real estate. And so it would, as a matter of prudence, it's important to have the flexibility to clarify, it's really not the change, but to clarify provisions in agreement, so that the lender can be comfortable that, as the lender reads it, it understands. So it's really just an administrative thing. I think there's a test in there, the city solicitor has to confirm that it's minor, that it's not, you know, it's not totally subjective at all. It's a necessary tool in modern day finance to have that, that little flexibility to provide clarification where a lender sees and can do it.
What kind of clarification are you talking about? Are you talking about, you know, the commission fees here, or this...
No, no, it's got nothing to do with the economic terms, you know, how much is paid. But it may be a question of clarification. For example, you picked up the phrase in the agreement that talks about how the excise tax is calculated, which Pam referred to, which is in the legal structure, which is what the owner gets paid in rent by, by the tenant, who's actually the developer, and what's common. But, so, the, a lender might concede with just for one confirmation that that is, that number is, that is being used in the lender's calculation, is the number that applies in that spot. That's all we're talking about.
So there aren't any actual changes, this is more just for a clarification?
It's really clarification, because the financing arrangements, these things are incredibly complex, and you have multiple people looking at them, and they're often from different jurisdictions, you may have New York lawyers, you may have, you know, LA investment bankers involved in it. And so you just need, you need, you need the capability to provide some clarification. So essentially allows the city through the mayor to say, yes, this is what we mean. That's essentially what we're doing.
Okay, is there any way, I don't know if this is a pretty well developed, or a pretty good way of thinking, if you can just clean up that language to clarify, because that, I never would have gotten from here to there, despite being that, so if we can, you know, come here and tell you...
We'll get some to the phrase clarification. That would help you with that, though.
Thank you. Is that good? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Again, I was thinking today of that moving ground box day in some respects. Here we are again, with another land disposition agreement. And I'd be lying to, if I didn't tell you, I'd get the same feeling I had back how many years ago, with a sense of urgency and rush, and yet, with a really kind of deep sense of our responsibility to legislate the body, to really larger diligence in relation to this, to ensure, kind of put it in a way, Councilor Paluji, if this is an asset, to ensure the best use of that asset to the benefit of the citizens and taxpayers and the citizens. That's our task, that's our job. And interestingly enough, we don't get that many bites of the apple to impact or affect that. The LDA, the land disposition agreement, that is one specific area where we do have some opportunity. And so I was thinking about it, in many respects, this land disposition agreement is far simpler than the Streetworks one that we had before us. But at the same time, in its simplicity, lends a certain level of complexity moving forward, particularly as it relates to the role this particular body plays as we move forward. And I do have some questions for Mr. Gary to that effect. Before I do that, I just, I was interested in Pam's presentation, because I think genuinely kind of sums up what we are really committed to here, this is what we've been trying to do for significant numbers of years, in terms of moving this forward, in terms of shaping what the future of such development looks like, to do it in some type of fashion, and to provide that incentive to do so. But the first question, I would just say to Pam, because I think Councilwoman Paluji touched on it a little bit, but in terms of the matters that you're talking about, in terms of balancing between the feasibility of this and the benefit and value to the city as well, I'm just curious, was there any modeling done whatsoever? You said we could do a whole other night in relation to this? And again, with the people that I hear from, some of the people who are really following, this is the number one question that I get, quite honestly, as it relates to this. Did you do any modeling out, from the perspective of the city of Quincy, apart from specifically to redevelop the value of possibly leading or achieving the same end through the process of ground, of ground lease, as opposed to a conveyance of a fee level? Did you do that kind of modeling?
Yes, I did.
And if you did, can you make that available to us?
Sure. I mean, I think the...
Well, we do have a bunch of voters, I'm sorry, I'm looking through...
For our at-home viewers.
Yes, we did do a modeling of the ground lease structure for this, and the issue that we ran into was the ability of the project to support that annual cost, or the annual payment, ground rent payment, at a level commensurate with the market rate, rent, at least in the early years of the agreement. We were having a lot of trouble getting, we refer to them in our conversation, is all the buckets to get filled up, and not put us in a position where the combination of a ground rent payment, the land lease, sorry, the parker payment, the permit fee payment, and the excise payment, be sufficient to cover everything and still provide that return, the tax return, after covering all of those buckets. And so we came back in the end to a structure that allowed us to shave the cost of the land over explicitly onto the development side, the developer side of the equation, and in so doing, free up the revenue, essentially, to flow to the city in a form of taxes rather than ground rent. And I suppose, a way of thinking about it is that, you know, it's a zero-sum game in a sense. The project can only support a 10% of proceeds, gross revenue, payment. And the more buckets we're trying to fill out of that 10%, the less there is to cover the, the effective excess taxes. So whether you pay the ground rent payment, or you just get it as tax revenue, kind of doesn't matter. And so long as the LDA contains the provisions that require performance, which a ground lease would, you know, a ground lease would be a proxy in a way for various performance requirements that you care about, like covering the cost of open space, et cetera, et cetera. As long as you're getting a public benefit out of that, the LDA...
Wherever it is where some of the complexity lies.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, we're swapping, we're swapping out some things that you might have found in a ground lease agreement, into, into an LDA, which, you know, so it's a, we're, we're trying to achieve the same thing without the burden, if you will, of having to make that ground rent payment an explicit part of the annual cash. You know, it's, I would refer to it as simply a different way of structuring it. In terms of the present value of it, it's the same. It's just a matter of whether you're getting cash in there at ODA1, or some payments created that extends over, over the life of ground lease. So financially, it's, it's quite similar. And again, the LDA itself is sort of a proxy for the sorts of things that you'd be trying to make into a ground lease, when, when you achieve public performance on benefits of that, et cetera.
So whatever's at the heart of this land disposition agreement that we go forward is that it needs to be structured in such a way that sufficiently protects the city's asset by the possible things that could go wrong, contain within that agreement some way for the city to remain...
To misuse the, to misuse its people.
The LDA, we believe, and again, I'm not, I'm not aware, but I believe that a lot, that a lot of work has been done to provide the sorts of protections and performance standards that will, that you can feel confident will deliver the kind of project, the sort of catalyst, the fact that the, you know, the obligations to the developer to do what is required, so that they're satisfying the city's objectives.
All right. And you do, you said you could make some of that model, they'll twist the contrast, and that'd be very, very helpful.
I'm happy talking to people about, about, um, sort of test.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, if I could, Gary. I'm cursed as a nonlinear thinker, so to speak, by, with the complexity of this particular LDA. And again, I have a host of questions that I honestly probably better answer, as we continue, than it would be specifically tonight. But in terms of what I find, you know, as I said, particularly complex in relation to this one, is that our previous LDA is essentially a contract with a master developer. We really had no master developer per se in this deal that we're, we're working with here. This is directly with one parcel, with one project, one interest in relation to it. But in the earlier LDA, what it was, was essentially a set of benchmarks and requirements for this so-called master developer, that then to find out certain things would happen in the event, and in the end, worked out masterfully, it was a good document, in the sense that it did protect the interests of the taxpayers of Quincy. The thing with this particular one that concerns me is that, within the LDA itself, it is really talking about specific events that proceed from, essentially, after the passage of an LDA. And I was just trying to think through some, some of those things, and I was writing down earlier that, that, you know, we're obviously, we reached the point where you're talking about closing, but then we also have to design, build contracts that relates to the parking, we, again, eventually, the passage of the bonds, the bands of bond necessary to make all of those moves forward, entering into a long-term parking lease, et cetera, all of these particular things. What I was wondering, could you outline for us, I mean, if you start from a moment of, let's say, this passivism, we have this land disposition agreement, in somewhat a linear fashion, what are the steps that take place from that point? I know there's some reference that it puts some guidelines related to completion, commencement of construction, completion, construction, et cetera. But in terms of the actions that this body has to be engaging and involved in to move it forward, do we have any kind of timeline for a sense of those things? The other thing, I know that it references certain takings that may be a part of this.
That's not part of the O'Connell project, per se. It's part of the garage project.
Correct.
And so, none of that will come to pass if we, unless we proceed with the garage project in this body, we come to this body to present the entire garage project, which includes those takings. So for O'Connell to proceed does not require those, those takings at this point in time. Those are part of the entire project that's envisioned with the garage.
But the garage is kind of a critical part of the large deal to achieve the very things that we have.
Does it, garage? Garage is a critical part of, of the deal. If there's no garage, there's no O'Connell project.
Right.
If there's no legislation, there's no O'Connell project. The issue of what they need to be taxed, and what they need this body to act upon by way of approval, is to have an approved LDA for them to get their financing. It's still going to take them time to get their financing. And their project will be contingent, and it's in the, it's in the LDA, will be contingent upon the ability of the city to proceed to build a garage. If we don't build a garage, this project...
So that's what I'm asking for, in terms of the linear model of working this out. Does that...
I think that's, I think that's a fair question. And we've talked about devising that, we do have timelines, and we can provide that to the council. So do you have an idea as to the timeline and sequence of events that need to occur? And they're all interlocking, occur in my analog form above the flight control of Street...
Just for example, the design building contract?
Yes.
Does that need to be in place prior to closing?
Yes, that is correct.
That is, that is one of the contingencies for the closing. And the council has a role engaged in that, in this contract, as we move towards closing.
Absolutely.
So a different way of this is, think of this, and I just want to be clear, because this is what I'm actually trying to figure out, but, for example, at the time of the previous, when, once we had reached the so-called LDA, the council was pretty much...
The council, yes, and...
But at this particular development, the LDA is just one part, that is the ongoing development.
That is absolutely correct. The Streetworks template was a one-time, you got one bite of the apple, once it was signed, that was it. Under the process that you approved under section P number 1, 2, 4, we, we have multiple bites to the apple, each time a...
So if, if the garage itself, and I don't want to say anything irresponsible, but if it's contingent upon us executing certain takings, then one presumes that process needs to happen prior to closing as well?
That is correct.
So there are things that...
Each of, each of these are interconnected?
Right.
And, and, and let me further add, that as it relates to the garage, the infrastructure, the sewer lines that we've talked about, they need to be moved in any way, whether or not the... or not the O'Connell project was moved. We need that to make way for the garage or for other developments that will take place in the downtown lot. So those are what I would characterize as prerequisites to, to gain access to the garage after the widened cottage street. So that's part of the tandem, if you will, of infrastructure work that will occur there. So all of these have a consequence for other elements to prospect development.
So I guess you are, not tonight, but who will put together kind of a linear...
Yes.
...time perspective in terms of what that, and also in relation to that, outline in some respect what the engagement through all of the city council is in relation to those steps.
Yes. And I'm going to add, in terms of timing and mentioning the financing, one of the concerns that the developer has had is the issue of interest rates. And actually, I met with him earlier last week, talked about this, and we were talking about the pending interest rate increases that could have happened at the federal level and elsewhere in the economy, depending upon what occurs with the economy. And as, as it relates to the presentation made by Pam, this project is going to be most affected by interest rates. And that's why the developer has some urgency on this board, as they go to pursue their financing options. And they can't do so until this body acts and then the department of housing and community development also approve it.
Well, again, towards that end that was mentioned earlier as well, the performance model to demonstrate that, it'd be useful to receive some of that as well, just to be able to take a look at that and review that. And again, I, I do have a whole series of other questions that I think with, given the overview that you've had tonight, I think would be probably more beneficial. I know you're meeting with our council, Mr. Shea, so a chance for maybe you found some of those things there as well. So at this point, that'll, that'll be it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilor Paul.
Thank you, Jim, Mr. Jim, I'm sorry. It's like Mr. Gary.
A little next to the theater.
Getting tired of it tonight. Question for you on the give financing, because a portion of this that we're not necessarily covering all over, I'm talking in broad strokes, as it pertains to public financing, is obviously the city will be working at a building replacement on the ground, both the parking garage as well as the proposed development. Alongside of that, obviously, we'll be investing in a parking garage as well. I don't know it specifically, but I do know that the summer, right, which was on break, this body authorized a, some of the DIF fund, a quote-unquote category for the summer.
Correct.
It's mid-December, and I have to imagine that fund is probably running on the news at this point.
That is correct.
So I think what we're developing for us, and for me anyways, but I collectively put together this whole package, I understand, focused on land disposition agreements as it relates to this project, and some of the parts of the whole. So it would be helpful for me to kind of put together what we may be looking at in terms of near-term DIF funding ask, if you will, kind of show us.
That is right, and we plan on, as you know, the city has had a expert, RKG Associates has appeared to the council and talked about the analysis for revenue from the DIF, what it can support in the future. And when we come looking for, you know, a consideration of that appropriation request, a presentation will be made by a gentleman for council.
So I'm assuming that that's probably coming after the land disposition agreement?
We, we are hoping to come back in February for your review of the garage proposal. And as a component part of that will be a review of the DIF, what it supports, it's obviously a garage of this magnitude, 650 to 700 vehicles, it's an expensive proposition. There are balances to achieve by way of the type of construction. One form of construction is more expensive, and I believe it's both expansion, but the garage has a longer lifespan, requires nice maintenance, and then there's, you know, competing precast concrete, which while has a better lifespan now than it did years ago, is more expeditious and less expensive. So that's a balancing, a cost benefit analysis, if you will, of which makes more sense to consider.
I mean, essentially, they'll pay, they live...
That is correct.
23.6 million is specified in this breakdown. Is that on the more conservative end, using non-tension?
That's correct.
That's essentially the cheap way.
That is, that is correct. And so, and those were very familiar. Now that we have, this term I mentioned earlier, Desmond Associates, they're doing very in-depth analysis on all of these aspects of it.
I mean, obviously, parking, I know we don't want to cover that in a ceremony, but this body has had, you know, incessant deliberations about how, you know, the parking garage is not just for us but really for the city. Yes, we have to get that number correct. That way, I would see parking as, would rather have more than not need than need not have. As someone who represents a peripheral, you know, at the moment, some of my councils there, I know that that parking number is not correct.
Yes.
That overflows, so I want to write it to the man. And I know that's something that I know what he wants.
Yes.
But I just need that sort of thought of that. And I came into this evening, you know, having read, taking quite a bit of notes, but wanted to come in with an open mind to hear sort of a prospect that was presented. So I'm very, very appreciative of that opportunity, and I know that we'll have further dialogue as this progresses.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate it. Mr. McDaniel, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Please.
Great to meet you. Nice to see you again. I mean, I like the sentiment, I always feel like I come out a little smart after I listen to your presentation. So thank you for that, you know, being our reflective thinker as well, so this will take some time, but sort of process question. I would be interested in seeing sort of that model or the process behind leasing versus the sale. And I heard you describe it as, I don't know what the words, you know, for the zero-sum game, and you want to take the money upfront, maybe with installments and, you didn't say it, but it's kind of like, you know, the chicken and the egg effect. But I think one thing you do when you sell this property versus leasing is you give up control, right? So that being said, as I sort of think through this, you know, this land disposition agreement goes forward, a 15-story building is constructed, whether it's leased by the city or owned by the developer, the prospects of tearing down a 15-story building, but anything else but a 15-story building is not happening. So what you see is essentially the vocal bait, whether it's leased or whether it's sold outright. So I think it kind of answers my own question, whether there's one or another. Well, it's true, right? I know that sounds very common sense, but the reality is, when you hear this comes thin, it has been, you can be asking that question several times myself. You know, I heard you, you mentioned that you've done a lot of big deals in Boston, and just so long, again, I try not to go over as people know, because I hate to do that to me. But what I heard is basically you're trying to do a big-time Boston project, which, you know, the Boston truck market would support 15 stories, and essentially you're taking that and putting it in Quincy. And in order to do that type of big, large-scale construction, it has to be, you know, incentives associated with it. Is that relatively accurate?
You have captured it perfectly. That's, that's it. That's the answer.
So, you know, as I think about that, and I look through some of the financials, right, the city will increasingly receive additional revenue over time. I think that's the long-term game for the city. The short-term game, I heard you use this word, and I'll use it in prior conversations, we put ourselves in a position to unlock and turn the value above the develop, and that's the hope of bringing the light of development in the short term to the city.
Yes.
And just based on what you've seen, just believe it or not, a day job headquarters in Seaport, we were essentially the only game in town, and it's not that way anymore.
Awesome.
So I think about a 15-story, you know, building in the city of Quincy, what are the types of development do you think that will be able to attract with that type of...
I think the aspiration should be for not just residential development, but for commercial development.
For sure.
I think ultimately, the Seaport is an interesting, you know, that'll be a bigger-scale version, but it's an interesting analog of what it means to invest in public infrastructure, in that case, by Masport.
Who still owns, oh, excuse me, has all the rights to the ground leases, all the built, watered buildings.
They've done statutory requirements, which originate from a problem, they can't, they can't sell, well, I should say, I shouldn't say it quite that way. They could sell, but the money that they receive goes directly into the general fund of the Commonwealth. It doesn't stay with them. So they favor the ground lease approach so that they can hang on to the money and pour it into poor infrastructure and the supply. But it's, it's a good illustration of what it means to invest in infrastructure to get the law rolling. And, you know, that has been a long-term, later one. You know, the, the little trade center was a pier shed with a railroad track along the hill as recently as the late 70s. And, you know, slowly by slowly, kind of like the engine could, the trains pressed to the top of the hill, and things are happening. I mean, it's really pretty astonishing.
Essentially created an entire neighborhood, it's multiple blocks, it is, I mean...
So, I mean, I think it takes, you know, think of it as a pioneer, you know, out in the wilderness trying to make a stake in a, in a, in an environment that isn't quite ready for that 15-story profile. You get that sort of impetus going and eventually get spurs, you know, lifetime in it. I think it should be expected it's just, it was for residential, it's going to signal something very different about the potential for that to please, which should extend into commercial, you know, hotel, middle class.
Right. Well, I know a lot of the appetite from the folks that currently live there is for additional businesses, is for additional commercial development and entertainment-type entities. I hear that a lot. And I compare it in a decent, obviously, from, say, the build-out, but I think more important, right, when we start to talk about access and how we...
At the commercial tax rate, yeah.
Revenue, so...
So every resident should add to the downtown as a consumer in the downtown that isn't available today. And, you know, all of that residential activity that's paid in on the commercial side of things, it means that you sell the commercial infrastructure.
And we've seen some of those, people, the restaurateurs come at an early stage, start to hang, and you change, and one of the folks actually expand downtown. And I would have to imagine that they're seeing essentially new growth, which is a built-in customer base, right? And I guess in a perfect world, everything's done, you know, in four or five city blocks, right? You can go to your supermarket, you can go to drive-in, you can go to restaurants, you can go to theaters, and you can go to the train. So that's in theory, right, how we hope that it all plays out. Just to sort of, you know, we talked about interest rates, and I hear this law in the development, this team worked a little bit around that stuff, so I understand it enough to read it and process it. So we talk about, you know, developers being in a position to capitalize on historically low interest rates, I agree to all that. Interest rates are probably going nowhere, but I'll agree to that. When I think about city money, we're also susceptible to rising interest rates, which I don't hear spoken about as much. So when I look at capital outlay as it pertains to the parking garage, and I see on the conservative side, $23 million, if they're going to layer and on anticipation notes for 10 years, you